I hereby call the Police Oversight Commission meeting to order on Thursday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five at five oh three P. M. Madam Secretary, please conduct roll call.
Commissioner Goransky, Commissioner Mejia.
Present.
Commissioner Perera, Commissioner Said.
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Vega.
President.
Vice Chair Castillo Lawton.
Here.
And Chair Carpenter.
Here.
Records show we have six members present. Chair, you have a court.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If able, will you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Next item on the agenda here is public comments. The public comments sections, this is a time for the Commission to receive comments from the public. We will not accept any additional requests for speaker cards once we begin the public comments section session. If you have not already, please submit your requests to the Recording Secretary. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Madam Secretary, do we have any public speakers?
Chair, I have no in-person speakers. Oh, and then the Zoom speaker, do you wish to speak? Manuel? Please raise your hand. So we have no speakers here.
All righty, now it's time for the consent calendar. Items number one and two is our motion to approve the consent calendar. I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Chair Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Said, and that was to approve item numbers one and two of the consent calendar. Sir, Commissioner Goransky. Commissioner Mejia.
Yes.
Commissioner Said. Commissioner Vega.
Yes.
Vice Chair Castillo Lawton.
Yes.
Chair Carpenter.
Yes.
The vote is six ayes, zero nays, with Commissioner Perera absent the motion carries.
All righty, that's the end of the consent calendar. Now we're into the business calendar. Next on the agenda is the business calendar. Items number three pertains to Senate Bill seven nineteen and Senate Police Department Policies three oh seven and three oh eight. May we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, Commissioners. Today, we are reviewing the Police Department personal response calls to calls in vehicle pursuits, and this is one of the items that was discussed as a policy that you wanted to review when we had the initial work-study session earlier in the year. So with that, I will hand it off to Commander Richard Weber.
All right, so my name is Commander Joe Weber. I'm currently assigned to two different divisions. I oversee our human resources and I'm also overseeing our training. So what I'd like to do today is just kind of go over some of the training that we provide our officers.
Let me interrupt you real quick. Let the record show, the Commissioner Perera arrived at five oh seven, please. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is just provide a little bit of insight as to the training that we receive as members of the Police Department for pursuits and also calls for service requiring like a code three or emergency response. If you'll move to page one with me. Post requirements, post is the, I'm sure you all know, is the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training. They basically require that every two years, our officers receive four hours of driver training and awareness. And we did that in spring of, or we initiated that in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. Our officers are consistently or constantly receiving training, whether it be in driver awareness and other topics as well, but we do cover four hours of that. Every year, they get one hour of vehicle pursuit training and every year pursuit attestation, essentially that basically they get a copy or we send them a copy electronically of the policies so that they can review the policies and acknowledge that they've received them and that they understand them. Okay, police recruit training. When the recruits are in the academy, part of their instruction includes forty hours of emergency vehicle operations, or what we commonly refer to as EVOC. Lecture topics there include judgment and decision-making, legal considerations, basic driving principles, vehicle dynamics, and defensive driving. Practical applications, they actually get into the car. If you've never seen an EVOC course, it's designed to mimic the types of streets and environment that we may see out there, right? So they learn how to drive kind of highways, streets. They also learn how to drive like in the rain, things of that sort. So that's the practical application requirement is that all post exercises must be completed. You either pass or fail. If you fail while you're in the academy doing EVOC, then you have to do remediation. Our new officer orientation includes two hours of driver training and awareness. Lecture topics include judgment and decision-making, department policy, legal considerations, basic driving principles, vehicle dynamics, and defensive driving. New officers on training are constantly evaluated every time they're involved in a pursuit or roll code three during an emergency response. So they're with their training officer. If they're driving and they're, if they go into pursuit or do that code three run, then they're constantly being guided through the process and afterwards, they're given feedback as to what they did well, what needs improvement. Okay, so for this year, as I had mentioned before, our advanced officer training including, included some driver awareness training and also topics such as judgment, decision-making, department policy, three oh seven and three oh eight are the policies. Legal considerations, basic driving principles, vehicle dynamics, and defensive driving. Practical applications, there was a maneuvering exercise station where they were to kind of drive around and show that they could maneuver and, you know, back up, go forward, things of that sort, and do it precisely. Every two years is when we complete that, as I had mentioned previously. This year, we, under the direction of the chief, we also had all of our sworn personnel attend eight hours of high-speed EVOC training. So they were basically kind of as a refresher as to what they received in the academy. Some of our, a lot of our patrol folks are still fairly new, but we can always use a refresher, and especially some of our officers that have, you know, ten, fifteen years out of the academy, they were sent to San Bernardino to do that EVOC, kind of a brief, not the full forty hours, but the eight hours, and they were, you know, they had the lecture topics on judgment, decision-making, legal considerations, basic driving principles, vehicle dynamics, defensive driving, and there was again, a practical application involving driving, pursuit training, things of that sort.
Do you prefer we wait till the end to ask questions or during the presentation?
Sure, you can ask questions if you'd like.
Yeah, if you can keep it brief, because I don't want to bog down the presentation and then it's.
I mean, I'm almost done. If you want me to go through the last couple of slides here and.
Let's do that, sir. Let's do that, and then we'll pull our questions. Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, so for the eight-hour update, as I mentioned, all our sworn officers, at least those that are in patrol, those, even those that are working detective assignments, things of that sort, I think everybody excepting the command staff did this eight-hour update. So two hundred and ninety-one officers were scheduled for training. In June, in June of two thousand and twenty-five, one hundred and eighteen officers received that training. September eighty-eight, October, we have seventeen scheduled to attend, and in January of next year, we have an additional sixty-eight officers that are scheduled to attend. Okay, so as far as our internal processes, internal review, all our pursuits are reviewed by first-line supervisors and managers or commanders to ensure participants follow state, state law and our policies and procedures. Essentially, if anybody goes into pursuit, they're required to advise dispatch if they are in pursuit, and basically, there's certain things that we want them to provide, vehicle description, direction of travel, where they are at the moment, weather conditions, traffic conditions, things of that sort. So they're constantly updating dispatch so that everybody out there in the field can hear and understand what's going on. We ask our supervisors, our corporals, our sergeants that are out in the field to closely monitor those pursuits, and if possible, we'd like the supervisors to actually get into the pursuit with the officers and trail it so that they can kind of see what's going on at the moment. Last year, as recently as last year, I was actually assigned to the watch commander's office, and watch commander has a radio in the, in the office there, and we're constantly monitoring the, what's going on. Our officers are encouraged, if things get a little too hairy out there, they're encouraged to discontinue the pursuit. We're always trying to weigh the risk versus benefit of those pursuits. Are we following a rapist or murderer, somebody like that? We may take some additional risks in continuing with that pursuit, but if it's just a traffic infraction, something like that, and it's middle of the day, kids are just getting out of school, then as a watch commander or as a sergeant or a corporal, we're going to cancel those pursuits, so as to, you know, in the best interest of safety of the citizens out there. Okay, all, all of our pursuits after the fact, they, they are reviewed by supervisors who have to, can basically do a report on the, on the pursuit, and those reports are all reviewed by managers. Now, if we have a collision, additionally, it's going to be reviewed by our deputy chiefs and the chief of police. Anytime we do a code run three, or a code three run or a traffic collision during a pursuit, it's very closely scrutinized. Per state law, we report the particulars of all of our pursuits to the California Highway Patrol. Any violation of policy results in discipline and, if appropriate, remedial instruction. Even if there are no violations of policy, supervisors or managers may recommend training if concerns are noted, okay? We all make mistakes, so it may not necessarily rise to the level of a policy violation, but maybe there's some things that we can improve on. When we do have training document, or training recommendations, we document those. Training recommendations are issued by a supervisor or a manager. They identify specific training needs and deficiencies, and the training is tailored to address identified areas in need of improvement. Training may also include a debrief of the incident, discussion of key training points, developing a training plan, one-on-one personalized training, online training courses, in-person training courses. On occasion, we've actually sent officers back to EVOC in San Bernardino to take a course, that eight-hour course that I mentioned before. Okay, our vehicle pursuit policy, I'm not going to go into the particulars of the policy, that's all accessible online, but by state law, we're mandated to have policies governing our pursuits and our emergency driving, and so our policies are three oh seven and three oh eight. All our officers and supervisors are required to know and abide by these policies, and any change in policy is immediately communicated for officers to acknowledge electronically. And again, we're asking them to review the policy and to acknowledge that they've received it and understand it. Our pursuit, like post-incident, reporting and documentation, there's always going to be a supervisor investigation, as I had mentioned. Again, we have those reporting requirements, and the supervisor will assess if that additional training is needed, and we're going to ask, were there mistakes made? We're always seeking to improve in anything that we do. So again, we're not perfect at pursuit driving, we're not perfect at responding to code three violations, we're only human, so if we can identify areas where we can help officers improve, then we're. So with that, if we have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with the first round of ten minutes each and second round of ten minutes each for questions, and we're going to start with Commissioner Perera.
No questions at the moment.
Commissioner Said.
Thank you, thank you, Commander, for the presentation. Couple of questions. Do we have statistics over the last three years as to how many accidents our police officers were involved in?
I'm sure we do. I don't have those statistics on hand, though.
If we can get those numbers just to assess whether the policy, training, and the internal procedures are effective in eliminating whatever issue occurred, I know in my line of work, police traffic accidents cost the city a lot, so I want to eliminate or limit the liability this city has. So if we can get statistics as to maybe the last three years, see if there's a trend in the accidents increasing or decreasing and why, I think getting to the root of the, of the issues would help us and the Police Department in making police officers drive more safely. Another question I had was, just out of curiosity, what does the four-hour training actually teach the officers?
Well, again, it's just, it's a lecture on, one of the things we do is oftentimes they'll show films, things of that sort to get the officers thinking. I know there's a post provides a film to where they have people that have relatives, things like that, of people that may be perished in a vehicle pursuit, so it kind of gets the officers thinking. And again, we're going over the specifics of a policy, trying to really engrain in officers the seriousness of driving at high speeds. So again, it's been a while for me specifically to take that course, so I wish I could provide you more details, but at the moment, I can't.
Okay, couple more questions. I don't know, you may have answered this and maybe I missed it. So I know the chief of police reviews an accident that happened involving a police officer. Is there an internal, like, traffic review board that the city of Santa Ana has that is like a three-person panel that would review if it was preventable, non-preventable, something like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, okay.
Commissioner, obviously all great questions. No, we don't have a board of that nature, however, it does go through multiple layers of review. When a traffic collision occurs, there's a determination, there's a non-administrative traffic collision investigation that is conducted, and based upon the collision investigation manual, there's a determination whether the officer was at fault or not, any mitigating factors that may be present, that's documented. Ultimately, that information is compiled into an administrative report, which in turn goes through the layer of review, first layer being the sergeant who actually conducts the investigation, second being the commander, then ultimately gets reviewed by our I.A. commander to make a determination if policy violations occurred in addition to whatever potential vehicle code violations. From that point, it goes to another commander for review, and then ultimately, for outfall collisions, they'll come through the deputy chief and the chief of police.
Okay, thank you. My thought in my mind is, if, for example, there's a police officer, and I don't know if this is a situation, but if there's a police officer that has like five preventable car accidents that he or she is involved in, what does the Police Department do in response to either stop the bleeding or change how this officer is driving? And I don't know what the answer is.
Well, in any violation of a policy, we use progressive discipline for the most part to where, you know, they're going to, they're going to be warned, they'll get a written warning, just step by step, and, you know, if we have an officer that's consistently crashing cars, you know, we may, we may look at, again, different ways to remediate that to help this officer as best we can. It just kind of depends on how serious the collisions are. Oftentimes, it's, it might just be a little fender bender or something like that, but if we have this officer who's been in several serious collisions, then we have to figure out what we're going to do at that point.
Okay, I think for right now, that's it. I don't mean to waste everyone's time. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'll just, I'll comment on one thing you mentioned. Obviously, the city of Santa Ana Police Department, we're not immune from traffic collisions by any means, but one thing Chief Rodriguez has done since becoming our permanent chief, he has mandated EVOC training for all of our personnel. That is not something we had done historically, where, with the exception of the rare instances where one individual officer is going to be sent to EVOC for whatever reason, whether it was a traffic collision or, you know, an incident warranted that training. However, we don't have our own EVOC facility, if you will, they're usually large and they have tracks and all this various equipment that's not readily available to us, but that was one of his priorities when he did become the permanent chief of police, is to send every sworn officer back to EVOC training, so that's something we're doing proactively to try to mitigate our traffic. So that's something we're doing proactively to try to mitigate our traffic collisions as it relates to the department.
Thank you. I think that also helps, because I know there's a vehicle code immunity for police officers, but you have to justify it with the training that police officers get. So I'm glad that's.
We also have to drive with due regard, right? So we have to be following the rules of the road as far as we're able to during a pursuit. And we have to essentially, driving with due regard means driving smartly, right? Not making foolish decisions while we're in a pursuit, taking, making undue risks or putting the public at risk.
And I think to that point, sorry, I guess I wasn't done. I think to that point, a lot of the accidents I'm seeing a trend in is the officer is looking at the, I guess, laptop or computer, trying to respond or type something in, not paying attention to traffic, and then something happens. So wondering if that's part of the discussion in the four-hour class or the training.
Definitely, we talk to distractions, right? And they're preventable accidents, especially if they're ones involving cell phones or, you know, looking at our mobile data unit or something like that. That's something, yeah, we talk about and we address.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mejia.
So thank you for the presentation. I have a lot of questions, but I'll keep them to the 10 minutes. So I'm curious about, and I think I agree with Commissioner Said, it would be really helpful to have a better understanding of what the decision-making process looks like in the training, because I think that we're unable to provide feedback, especially we're trying to address policy when we don't know if it's a training issue or if it's a practical issue, right? Is there a gap in what they're learning? Or is it a culture that they've learned because this is what others do and they just dismiss training? So without knowing specifics, it makes it harder for us to make recommendations. And then my, so I have, so one of my questions is, similar to the data, is San Ana PD's pursuit data, like initiation reasons, demographics, and locations publicly available or disaggregated by neighborhood or race?
As far as the pursuits go?
Yeah. I couldn't find them online, but.
Well, anytime we make an arrest or something like that, all that data is available. So if, let's say we were in a pursuit and we lost the individual and we're unable to identify him, then we would be unable to determine, you know, who they are, where they come from.
So I notice on the, on your website, there's information, right? So what I'm hearing is that I could select pursuit and I should be able to find those publicly available? There's some data that's publicly available.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay, so what in, right? So that's my question. If we can have that information, that would be helpful in terms of how many total, the reason why it was initiated, demographics, and the locations where they're happening of the actual pursuit, or at least where they started. And I also wonder, does San Ana PD ever authorize pursuits for nonviolent or property crimes such as stolen vehicles or traffic violations? If so, what risk analysis is required before initiating those?
So yes, we do authorize pursuits in those situations. Again, it's going to be, it's going to depend a lot on what's going on at the moment, what time of day it is, traffic conditions. Again, if I'm a supervisor out in the field, or if I'm a watch commander and I hear that there's, you know, there's a pursuit going on and it's 2:30, 3:00 in the afternoon, I'm probably going to discontinue that pursuit if it's for a minor offense.
But is that written in policy or practice? Because even here, right, on your policy, the 307.2 on page 15 on the section 307.3.1, it says officers are authorized to initiate a pursuit when the officer reason believes that a suspect who has been given appropriate signal to stop a law enforcement officer is attempting to evade arrest or detention by fleeing in a vehicle. And so that to me, although it seems a little bit prescriptive, that's to me is general, right? Because how do you know, or how does an officer know that the person is trying to evade arrest if when you're stopping someone, you're technically not arresting them?
Well, when you stop somebody.
There could potentially lead to that, of course.
Right. When you're stopping something, somebody, they're detained. So they're not free to leave. For the most part, with very few exceptions, if we get into a pursuit, it's generally because we put our red lights and sirens, try to effect a stop, and they don't stop. They take off. So there are occasions, back in the day when I was actually on patrol, there were occasions where people were just confused. You turn the red light and siren on, and they weren't quite sure what they were supposed to do. Those people are generally not going to be driving 60 miles an hour, like in a 35 mile an hour speed zone. So that's, again, it's, it's, a lot of it's just experience and training of the officer. But for the most part, if they take off from us, then we have a reason to pursue.
Can you walk me through what type of training or decision-making process that entails? So I understand that someone fleeing can trigger an officer to pursue?
Well, let me, let me stop there. So just the, somebody's fleeing, we don't just indiscriminately stop cars out there, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand.
And try and affect a stop, and they flee from us, that triggers the pursuit.
So even if it's just like a traffic stop? So for example, if the person was speeding, like, do you have a threshold of, like, if they're speeding X amount, that's when you file pursuit? If they're just going by five, you don't do that? What is it that triggers it?
Well, I'm not going to, again, that's, that's up to the officer's discretion. As far as who they're going to pull over, but if they try and affect a stop, they try and pull somebody over, a justified stop, and the person flees, then they can pursue.
Yeah, which is justifiable, right? Officer can, if they have, if you have discretion, you.
Right, if we have a reason to stop, and that's the, we're generally, if somebody just flees from us for no reason, and we weren't going to stop them in the first place, I mean, I suppose we could go after them if it's reckless driving and they're endangering other people on the road. But for the most part, if somebody sees us and they just take off and there's no vehicle violation, then we're likely not going to pursue them.
I see. And so when you, so not in theory, not in policy, but in practice, that's what you see in your reports? That officers make that type of judgment?
Yeah, they're going to outline the reason for, hey, this is what I saw, they ran a stop sign, or they went through a red light. So they're going to let us know, this was the reason I wanted to stop them. I activated my lights, they still didn't stop, I activated my siren, they still didn't stop, and they attempted to flee. So the officer's going to articulate why it was that they got in the pursuit.
Yeah, and so I do understand that, and I think that that sometimes can also create problems, right? So for example, if it was, even if the person didn't stop, and it was something that was minor, and then it turns it to a pursuit and it turns into an accident, right? So I think my question is really more of that. What, what does that look like here on a practical, like, for your department? Does that often happen? Because then I can see where the rationale is that, well, the individual should have stopped, but also if you're being pragmatic with resources and thinking about safety, then I would think a pragmatic officer would also think that if it's no threat to someone else, we don't really have to pursue them right now, right? So that's kind of what I'm trying to get at. What is it that that is?
Again, it's, I can't tell you, this is exactly what's going to trigger it. It's going to be up to the officer's experience and their discretion.
Okay, so I think when we have the data, then we can have better analysis then to determine that.
I don't know that the data is going to show that.
They don't take, they don't document the reasons why they.
They document, they're going to document reasons why they, why they affected the stop. But generally speaking, it's going to be because they're of a traffic violation, or it might be maybe a crime in progress. Let's say you roll to a burglary in progress, and you arrive on scene, three guys with ski masks run out of the house, and they jump in a car. Right there, you have reason to pursue.
Yeah, that's different. Yeah, that's different than the other stuff that I was asking.
So but anytime an officer is in a pursuit, then they are required to author a report. And in that report, they outline the reasons for the, for the stop.
So Commissioner, let me see if I can help here. So I think I hear your question, and if I understand it correctly, it's, there's a vehicle code violation. You mentioned speeding five miles per hour, the officer attempts to stop, and then there is a pursuit that ensues. So it's all cumulative. So if an officer sees a traffic violation, however, you know, quote-unquote minor, it's an infraction, and the officer attempts to stop, and the vehicle flees, then at that point, the balance test immediately kicks in. The officer has to use their judgment to say, okay, is this vehicle worth pursuing? How long do I let the pursuit go? They have to notify dispatch over the radio, which triggers immediate oversight, oversight by the watch commander, which is typically held by a commander position and/or a sergeant acting in that commander role, and any field sergeant that are supervisor that's in the field. So there's already an additional layer of review that's happening once that is broadcast over the radio. So there's immediate oversight. The officer's responsible for saying, you know, direction of travel, traffic conditions, and what the want is. And then that's just a very non-technical term for saying, what are we chasing? What is this vehicle involved in? Typically, an officer will say, vehicle code violation. So that lets us know in the supervision role that I'm chasing somebody for a potential vehicle code violation. That's the start of it. However, the evading in and of itself could be misdemeanor evading and/or felony evading. If we start getting into reckless disregard for public safety, that could trigger into felonious conduct. But the evaluation of the individual pursuit is ongoing, and it doesn't stop at any stage throughout the pursuit. So I think there is, there's, there's definitely a balance test that happens with what are we, what do we have? Is this traffic infraction with a pursuit, or is this something more severe? But with that being said, oftentimes, things that start with a traffic infraction end up being very significant cases, whether it's drug trafficking, whether it's a stolen vehicle that, you know, had a mismatch plate on it, whether there's guns in the vehicle. So that's kind of some of the process that goes on.
Yeah, thank you. That was really helpful. I think that's exactly what I was trying to get at. What, do you have the data, right, that leads to those kind of cases? Because then that would be different, as opposed to if we see that there's a pattern where it's just traffic violation that then leads to a pursuit, and there's no contraband or anything else, aside from the fact that they didn't stop. Then I would think that that would be a practice we would look into, as opposed to them finding something else. But it seems like officers have a lot of discretion, I guess. If with the data, I think we can better assess that.
I think, yes, definitely the officers have discretion. We trust them to make those decisions. However, once that pursuit is initiated, you know, from where I sit in the organization, where the watch commander sits in their office monitoring the pursuits, the sergeant in the field also has discretion, the commander himself has discretion. So if a pursuit is going on, and everybody's responsible for the conduct of that individual officer who's conducting that pursuit, and ultimately, when it's reviewed, the sergeant's going to come after the fact or even become involved in the pursuit, evaluate it, and could terminate it, say, hey, let's stop this pursuit. And that happens very often, where based upon that balance test, we say, hey, we're going to discontinue this pursuit.
Okay, thank you. So I have, I still have five minutes, yes, okay. So I wonder when and what factors lead pursuits to eventually use use of force? Is that data that you have? Is that, is there, I know you say that, I know, I truly do understand and recognize that PD have a lot, has a lot of discretion when out in the field. But I also imagine that you see patterns, right? And you, you probably have things that you see. So I'm curious, you as an expert, what factors do lead sometimes PD to have use of force? And when do the pursuits end up in deadly use of force?
I wouldn't be able to tell you like what percentage, you know, ends up in, with the use of force here, here right now. But I will say, anytime we're involved in a pursuit, at the conclusion of said pursuit, we generally conduct what we call a felony car stop. And we have procedures in place to minimize risk to both officers and the individuals that we're trying to get into custody. So basically, we make a car stop, they're directed to, like, throw the keys out of the, out of the car, or put them on the, on the roof of the car. One by one, they're directed to get out of the vehicle, to come back to the officers. So there's procedures in place to make it as safe as we can make it safe. Oftentimes, you may have an individual that runs from the vehicle following or at the conclusion of pursuit. And again, just as, you know, we're following or we initiate a vehicle pursuit, we may initiate a foot pursuit if we're trying to get that person into custody. And a lot of it depends on how cooperative they are as to whether or not we use, have a use of force.
And I assume that both the policies for car pursuit as well as the use of force kick in at that time?
They're always applicable.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, was your question, if we're going to use force to stop the pursuit, meaning stop the vehicle from moving?
No, 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 I understand there's different tactics to physically stop the pursuit, right? That you have them, I do read, I read the policy. So I don't have questions about that. I'm more asking the use of force or deadly use of force that sometimes happens, right? Like, I can, I can easily Google, anyone can easily Google pursuits in San Ana PD, and we have a lot of YouTube videos that pop up, right? And so that's kind of what I'm asking for. I know we can't discuss specifics of cases, and that's not really what I'm getting at, but rather just.
Again, a lot of it is just dependent on the, on the behavior of those people who we're pursuing. So if they're compliant and they're doing what we're asking them to do, then it's going to be just simple, tough them, search them, and secure them, right? But if they're, if they're fighting officers or they're not complying with our directives, then that might lead to a use of force.
And so, and that is all documented if, in the event that that does lead to that? And then has there been additional training with maybe language barriers or anything like that?
We generally, officers, I can't say that every officer speaks both languages, but we have a lot of bilingual officers there, to the point where most times when you make a stop, you're going to have more than one officer. And you're going to have, well, pretty much anytime you make a stop in a pursuit, you're going to have more than one officer. And one officer generally is going to know how to deliver commands in Spanish and in English.
And so, I mean, we know that what, what is in practice and in policy is not always what happens, right, on the field? Like, you even said, people make mistakes, people are humans. And so how do we ensure that this is not a cultural practice thing? And what is PD actively, proactively doing to ensure that that is not the case?
Ensure what's not a culture?
Of the excessive use of force, especially when it comes to pursuits.
Well, I mean, we have the topic of pursuits, and then we have, there's two separate topics, obviously.
Yeah, and I'm asking specifically.
Our use of force is basically, again, officers, we have a policy in place, and officers are required to follow that policy. Anytime we have a use of force, there's going to be scrutiny, there's going to be review, similar to what we have in a pursuit. So there's going to be a, an investigation there in the field. There's also going to be, you know, that supervisor's going to have to write up what happened, they're going to submit body worn camera footage of what happened, that's going to go up the chain of command.
And my understanding is that the SB 719 bill kind of also prescribes that, right? So I'm curious, does San Ana PD, because my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you're in, I can imagine that if you're currently in a pursuit, that you might not be able to turn on your body camera, or is it on the entire time?
Officers are supposed to have their body worn cameras on when they're in a pursuit.
When, exactly, but they have to activate it, right?
Right, so when they go into pursuit, then they activate their body worn camera. The body worn camera in and of itself, just because of where it's on the body, may not capture the pursuit in and of itself, but it's going to capture the officer's actions after they make the stop. Generally, what you'll see is like a steering wheel, and, you know, you're not going to see a whole lot of outside the windshield.
Yeah, and in the event where maybe they're going really fast and they didn't have the opportunity to turn it on, as that can sometimes happen, does San Ana PD have in-camera systems, and do they automatically activate when emergency lights go on? Is that something that's automatic, or they have to actively select it?
Officers have to actively select it. So, and we don't have, our vehicles aren't equipped with cameras.
Okay, and then has San Ana PD reviewed whether body or dash cameras capture the entire pursuit, including the decision to initiate it?
Yeah, again, there's a, there's a review throughout. There might be, just depending on the officer, there might be a slight delay when they decide to go into pursuit. Again, there's lots, lots going on, a lot of adrenaline and things like that. So are there officers that sometimes forget to turn on their body worn camera? It happens on occasion.
And then I, so the folks who review this are supervisors, right?
Correct.
And so my understanding is that, I'm not saying San Ana PD is actively doing this, but my understanding is that a lot of departments, law enforcement have moved towards using AI. Is San Ana currently in a contract with an AI company that does the reviewing for them? For the body cameras? Okay, that's, I mean, I have more, but I'll let folks talk.
Thank you. Commissioner Goransky.
Did I hear you correctly? Did you say that you have them also practice driving in the rain? How to drive in the rain?
That's part of EVOC training. So they have, it's like. So they have, it's like, it's a skid pan, and it's basically kind of slick concrete, and they, they put a bunch of water on it to basically assist the officers and into experiencing like hydroplaning and things like that. Fortunately, most of the vehicles now are equipped to where it prevents a lot of that, but they're, they're taught how to, to drive on wet slick surfaces.
Okay, because I was going to put a little bug in your ear. It doesn't rain here very much. Okay, another one, speaking of all the incidents here. How many, how many incidents, excuse me, how many incidents involving Santa Ana, such as the freeway pursuits that we are forced to watch on, on television, right in the middle of a movie when LA cuts in, and then the next three or four hours, we have to sit there and watch that or turn the television off? How many times or how many pursuits has Santa Ana been, been involved on those freeway pursuits?
It, it happens on occasion. I, I mean, I couldn't tell you numbers right now. But I, I will say, for the most part, if, if a pursuit goes on to the freeway, oftentimes, we, we try and get assistance of the CHP to take over the pursuit because they're, they're experts on the freeways, we're experts on the streets. So, but that's not to say that we don't trail once they get involved.
Okay, just wondering, because I never see.
It, it happens on occasion.
I don't see Santa Ana on the TV, not that I want to.
It doesn't, you know, for, for the most part, most of our pursuits are, occur on, on surface streets.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But it, it does happen on the freeway.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vega, it is your turn.
Thank you for that presentation, and I don't have much other than, I do want to echo what Commissioner Said said. I also want to look at the traffic collision stats. And also, I wanted, if you can clarify, in policy 308, it says officers not authorized to respond. Code three shall absorb all traffic laws. So in other words, a police car, a police officer cannot just run a red light if he doesn't have his sirens on, right? Is that correct?
Correct, he's supposed to have.
They, they should obey the traffic laws at all times.
If they're, if they're.
As long as they're not in code three.
Well, that, that is running code three, is having the lights and sirens on.
Otherwise, they, they need to obey all the traffic laws, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, and that's it. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Mr. Castillo.
Hi, I just have a few questions. So there, there's been talk about discretion. Can you just explain how individual officer discretion factors into a pursuit? Like, meaning the person that is engaging in the pursuit, how does that discretion factor in?
Well, there's discretion as to, okay, I'm going to pull this car over, right? There's discretion as to, I'm going to, I'm going to pursue this vehicle. I'm going to turn my red lights and siren and follow them. There's discretion as to, am I going to discontinue thi- this pursuit? You know, if they're following, let's, let's say, for example, there, there's a motorcycle, and the motorcycle just takes off, and there's no way they're going to catch him, then it would be up to the officer, and most of the officers are going to just, hey, I lost them. They're going to discontinue the pursuit. So again, we depend on the officers to, to look at the conditions. Conditions can evolve. You may start, you know, when there's very little traffic, but it may go to a, maybe a major street where there is more traffic. So we, we're asking the officers to use their discretion as to whether it's wise to continue with the pursuit. And again, we have multiple layers. We have the supervisors that are out there as well, monitoring to make sure that the officers are using sound discretion. There's checks and balances there in the field, and there's also checks and balances inside.
That makes sense. How do the different layers of discretion interact? So for example, like you have the guy who is engaged in the pursuit. They have their own discretion. Then you have the watch commander, whoever, they have their own level of discretion. Who's trumped at the end of the day?
The watch commander.
So if a supervisor, okay. So if a watch commander, let's say there's a pursuit, and a watch commander says, continue the pursuit, and the driver says, I don't feel comfortable. It's like, I, I, maybe I don't, I'm not a strong driver or something like that. Who has the final say in that situation?
If the officer doesn't feel comfortable in a pursuit, then 100% they can discontinue the pursuit.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, as a, as a watch commander, I, as a supervisor, I'm never going to, I'm never going to tell an officer to, to continue a pursuit. That's something that's going to be up to the officers in the field as to, again, they're going to weigh the risks versus the, the benefits of continuing the pursuit. But I'm never going to order an officer to continue in a pursuit, especially if I'm a watch commander. I can't even see what's going on.
Okay, so it's not like in the, in the military or something like that? Where your, you know, supervising officer tells you to do something and you're obligated to do it? So, okay, does that, does it go the other way? So for example, if a watch commander says, don't continue the pursuit, and the driver says, I really think I should, I, I want to exercise my discretion and pursue this person?
They don't have that discretion.
They don't have that, okay. So the discretion only goes the other way?
Right.
Meaning to terminate.
Yeah, if, if a supervisor tells them to discontinue the pursuit, then they need to discontinue the pursuit. And again, the watch commander has a radio in their, in the office there. They're monitoring everything that's going on. And if the watch commander's not comfortable with pursuit, they, they can actually get on the radio right then and discontinue it, or they can contact dispatch and say, hey, advise all units to discontinue the pursuit.
Okay. Are there ever conflicts between the two? Like in the example that I gave where the watch commander says, continue the pursuit, and the driver says, I don't feel comfortable, does that, does that come up often?
If they're, for the most part, I don't know that I've seen it happen a whole lot. To be perfectly honest, on occasion, you may have an instance where there's a miscommunication, but those are few and far between.
Okay. One other question that I have is, so we talked about violations of policy. So if a pursuit happens, there's a review for a potential violation?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. And there's also, well, who, who initiates or who performs that review?
Again, there's multiple layers. So you're going to have a supervisor who's going to essentially investigate the pursuit, the reasons for it, what happened during the pursuit, whether or not policy was adhered to. And then it's going to go up to the, to the commander. Generally speaking, most of our pursuits are with patrol officers, marked units. And so it's going to go to like the, the watch commander. Watch commander's going to review that supervisor's reports. And, and then from there, depending on, again, there's, there's multiple layers of scrutiny. If there's no collision or anything like that, then it goes to the, to, at following a pursuit, it's going to go to Internal Affairs for, for filing if the watch commander finds that it was justified and that they were within policy.
Okay.
If there's traffic collisions, things like that, then it goes even further, and it's got to, it's going to go all the way up to the chief.
Okay, and I think I saw in your presentation that all pursuits are reported to the California, what is it?
Highway Patrol, yes.
Highway Patrol, is that right? Okay.
Yes, there's a, there's a form that, that we all have to fill out. And the form prompts different questions as to, you know, the, the violations that were observed or what was the reason for the pursuit, how many units were in the pursuit, speeds, the duration and length of the pursuit. So it's, it basically prompts you to give all those details.
Do they conduct their own investigation as well? Do you know?
They, they do not.
Okay, so they just collect that information for like metrics purposes, it sounds like? Okay. What about changing topics, due regard? So you mentioned that earlier. What does that mean exactly? To drive with due regard?
To drive with, essentially, to drive responsibly. So we're not going to just go, go out there and, and take undue risks or anything like that. We're not going to drive beyond our, our capabilities. So we're not going to, basically, we're going to drive under control.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, for context, can you illustrate a situation of a police officer driving without due regard during a chase? Like, what would that look like?
What would it look like if the officer is out of control and can't, can't, is? I don't know that I could illustrate that. It's just kind of one of those things where driving responsibly is going to depend, depend on, on the individual. I, I don't know how to.
I guess, I, the reason I, I ask that question is because I imagine that a high speed chase is, you know, dangerous. And so are there situations where there's like a very obvious, you know, a, a very obvious, I don't know, way to drive that is without due regard? I mean, if you're going like, if you're in a high speed chase and you're going 120 miles an hour, like, that could potentially be just. Potentially be justified now.
If you're traveling too fast, where it becomes dangerous, or let's say you're blowing red lights without clearing the intersection, that would be driving without due regard.
Okay. And then my last question has to do with use of force and how that factors into a pursuit. Can you, can you expand on that? Or can you shed some light on how police officers use force to bring a pursuit to an end?
Bring it, so like using a vehicle, like a maneuver or something like that?
Exactly, exactly. So like ramming a car, or I think I saw in the policy that you're allowed to shoot at cars. Does that, is that true?
No, we're generally discouraged not to shoot at cars.
The policy says you can do it in some instances.
It would depend, yeah, it would depend on circumstances. If you're, if you're driving and they're pointing a gun and actively shooting at you.
Okay.
That, but again, that's very rarely would that happen.
So how, how often do you know are, does a vehicle pursuit result in use of force during the pursuit?
So i- if we're, for example, if we're going to ram a vehicle to, in order to conclude the, the report, that has to be justified. So it's basically, it could be considered a deadly use of force. Obviously, you're in a, in a heavy vehicle. So if you were going to terminate a pursuit and crash into a vehicle to do it, there would have to be a justification. Let's say he's mowing down people, and there's no reason for him to be doing that or something like that, and we have to stop him, just, just like if somebody had a gun and we had to eliminate the threat.
Okay. Do you know, just ballpark figures, how often the police department uses force to, to bring a, a pursuit to an end as opposed to just like letting, letting the person get away, for example?
Very few and far between. We have other tools that we can use. We have tire deflating devices that can, that can be used. I don't know that, that would, we wouldn't classify that as a use of force. That would just be a, a way to, to stop the pursuit. But that in and of itself can be quite dangerous. So it doesn't happen all that frequently, but it, it does happen.
Okay, all right, those are all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Why are the reports given to the CHP, what's their connection with you guys?
I think it's just for, for statistics. The, the state wants to know what's going on with all the different agencies, and it's, it's to help just keep track of, of how many pursuits we have and what, what maybe the state can do as far as laws and things like that governing pursuits.
And again, to.
For statistical purposes, the, the state wants to know that.
Yeah, to tie into Vice Chair's question, there's, it's just issue to them, they don't respond to you then with anything, is that correct?
The only time, I guess, they would respond, they're, they would be reviewed, but if there was, if, if something that caught their attention, they might reach, reach out to us. I don't know that I've ever seen that happen.
Got you, got you. So it's more statistical than anything else, correct?
More statistical than anything else, yeah.
Thank you. And just to be clear, you know, we're hearing a lot about the use of force. I think there's two different categories, the stop, there's a use of force can be used to, to end the pursuit.
Correct.
And then there's a different policy for use of force after that has taken place, correct?
And sometimes, sometimes they, they overlap.
No, I, I appreciate that.
If you were going to stop a vehicle by ramming it, then that's when those, those policies overlap.
Understood, but just to be clear, you, there's a pursuit, the vehicle stops, and then things don't go well. There's the use of force policies that we've reviewed in the past that would apply to that situation, correct?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. That's all my questions. And we'll go back to Commissioner Pereira, you got your 10 minutes.
Thank you, I just have one comment and one question. Thank you for the presentation. Definitely want to echo Commissioner Said's request for the data on traffic statistic, sorry, traffic collisions, and if you can also get the data around traffic pursuits that ended in, in a debt for 10 years. I think the statistics for 10 years will be great, going back to 2015, possible. The question, and I see that the, in this, relating to the inter jurisdictional considerations, they're very well outlining the protocols, the considerations when we have an agency that initiated the pursuit that enter our city. And I see that there is differential, prefer differential, right, to the jurisdiction or to the agency that started the pursuit. But do we have any policies or what are the laws governing when if, if the Santa Ana Police Department needs to request the agency that started the pursuit, enter into a jurisdiction to their, essentially relinquish the pursuit to our department? Are there any laws governing that?
I don't know that there's any laws per se. As far as policy goes, we generally will not get involved in a pursuit unless we're requested to do so. A lot of times, if, if, let's say, I'm pursuing a vehicle, goes into another city, likely I'm not going to be all that familiar with that city. So it's beneficial to have a, maybe another agency join the pursuit that can call the pursuit. But most agencies, I would imagine, have similar policies where they're not going to get involved in a pursuit unless they're specifically requested to do so. And, and again, if we're in a, if we're involved in a situation like that, and we feel that, hey, this guy's driving too crazy, we're, we're dropping out, we also have that discretion.
And, and then maybe this is.
And, and just to expand on that, you also have a supervisor or, or a watch commander might interject if, hey, what are you, what are you chasing this guy for? And it's just a, a minor traffic, or minor traffic infraction, then the supervisor or the watch commander may refuse and say, hey, we're not getting involved in the pursuit.
Okay, that, that answers my question.
Commissioner Said.
Thank you. For our vehicles, when you turn on the lights and sirens, is the dash cam automatically turned on?
No, we don't have dash cams in our vehicles.
Oh, you guys don't?
We don't.
None of them?
None of them.
Wow, that's so interesting, why?
I, I couldn't tell you why we don't have the, the dash cams. I know they've explored it in the past, but we have body worn cameras is, is what we have now.
I wonder what the budget is to get something like that? Because it's really helpful, not just for us to assess problems, but in the defense of, of whatever happened. It's just helpful to get not just BWC, but dash cams, that's, that's unique.
So let me jump in for just a second. We did have a council meeting on Tuesday, and there was a council member requested item that our department look into dash cams or some sort of cameras that go in the vehicles. And that's research that our police department will be pulling, that we'll be presenting to city councils sometime in January.
Nice, yeah, I think that that would be really helpful to everyone, to the police department, to the community, to us. I, I assumed the other way, so thank you.
That's why I asked the same thing, like, which one is turned on first?
Commissioner, you're up.
Well, obviously. So I have, and I'm, I'm asking this not because I, because I feel there's some things that have been still unclear. So first, in terms of the pursuit, right? A lot of us have asked a question about the, both the use of force can coexist with a pursuit, right? The physical stopping of a vehicle, I'm not asking about that. I'm asking when there is a pursuit, and then the person eventually, the vehicle is stopped. The, the, that can lead to an altercation dependent on the situation, right?
Generally, depending on what the, what the, the individuals are doing. If they're compliant, following directions, then, you know.
I mean, this is something that's often, obviously, a conversation, right, about compliance.
I, I will say, most of the time when we get involved in the use of force following a pursuit, it's because the person runs after they, they crash, or the, comes to, you know, the vehicle stops and they take off running, and the officers are chasing them, might tackle them or something like that to stop them.
Yeah, and I understand the tactics that need to be done to secure, right? Or to ensure that the person is detained, et cetera.
Right, that's the reason we went to pursuit in the first place was to, because we feel that the individual needs to be apprehended.
So my question is, so there's two. So in this scenario of the person has stopped and there's potential use of force, I wonder what information does PD obtain in that moment? Do you use technology to have additional information that, that can help you? Do you use technology to have additional information that, that can help you make that decision to use use of force, um, or deadly use of force? So for example, right, the policy for use of force in addition to this is that it changed from reasonable to necessary, right? To only when it's necessary now. And so my question is, in order for you to make a necessary decision, what information do you have if you're following someone and you know they broke, for whatever reason, you're stopping them? Is it because you have intel information from maybe you got a report, or maybe you look up the place and you know that this person is wanted for something else? What information does the officer have to then make the decision?
Well, it's on, it's on a case-by-case basis, right? So I may make a, a stop for, let's say somebody runs a stop sign. Uh, I may decide to initiate a, a stop and then they fail to stop. There's a failure to yield is what we call it. Um, we'll give them a moment, just in case there might be a little bit of confusion. We generally aren't just gonna turn on lights and siren immediately. We may follow them a little bit longer. And then, uh, you know, with our lights on, and if then they don't react to that, we turn the, the siren on. And if they continue to go, then, then we may initiate that pursuit. But, um, as far as getting intel or information, um, oftentimes, well, anytime we're in a pursuit, we're gonna provide our dispatch with the, uh, the plate number. And, uh, they'll let us know, let's say if it's a stolen vehicle, um, those are always put in the system. Um, they'll let us, well, most of the time they're put in the system. But, um, they'll let us know if, let's say there's a, a wanted individual, or if the vehicle's associated with a wanted individual. So there's limited intelligence that we, we can get just by providing the, the plate number.
Okay, so those are two separate things. Sorry, I wish I had, we, we should, we need a board to draw. Um, so those are two separate scenarios, right? So you, you kind of answered my first scenario that I had questions about initially, which is this idea that if a person fails to stop, right, they fail to yield, then that all, that all, that signals to the officer that now they can pursue, right? They might take other techniques, right, not, not full pursuit as of now. But because they're failing to stop, that could lead in the totality, right, of the circumstance into something else. And my question is, and I hear you when you say the supervisor might, or the, the commander might signal and say, actually, stop this pursuit. But as we know, people are human and people don't always have common sense or make logical decisions in the moment. So I'm curious if you, if there's a pattern where this happens, where something so trivial as a stop leads to something worse. Because in, if, if PD ends up creating a pursuit, or you could say that the person created the pursuit, right? And you're just following directions, but others can view it differently as well. Is that if we're, if we're caring about safety and resources, then somebody who just failed to, to stop wouldn't be a huge issue, right? So is this a pattern? Is this something that is an outlier and it rarely happens?
Is what?
The pursuit of just trivial stops.
Uh, again, it, it depends on, uh, you know, a variety of factors. If somebody doesn't stop, most officers are gonna try and, 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 uh, initiate, they may initiate a, a pursuit. And again, they're looking to see, hey, this guy's driving like a nut, uh, it's not worth it. And if that's all they have is the, uh, is the, um, the traffic infraction. But again, you know, in, in driving that way, let's say they hit a car or something like that, then it, it starts, it starts growing and maybe even the need to, to stop the individual. Um, generally, it's gonna be based on an officer's experience and their discretion. Um, there, there's other factors as far as, let's say you're chasing them, they may throw, throw stuff out the, out the window, whether it's narcotics, it might be, we've had guns pitched outside the window, things like that, that kind of makes it, uh, a little bit more urgent as far as.
That, that is not, yeah, I understand that. That is not my question. I'm not, I'm not, I, I understand that those, there's certain situations where that can lead to that. I'm talking about, I'm asking that if your data or your information, I mean, you're the expert, I don't know what happens in the Santana PD, you have information for that. We don't have public information on that. So I'm asking if, when those pursuits are happening, are the total amount out of 100%, how many are very trivial that continue to be pursued? And if that is the case, or be, or is that not the case in Santa Ana? Everyone's making good judgment and only pursuing cars that really have a valid reason.
If, if I could jump in quickly on a related question. The, the, the policy says that extended pursuits of violators for misdemeanors, not involving violence, risks of serious harm or weapons, independent of the pursuit, are generally discouraged. So I think a related question is, understanding that these types of pursuits are generally discouraged, how often do they actually occur?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I couldn't tell you as far as numbers go. Um, I, I would say that if you are, um, especially if we have additional information or intelligence that lets us know, hey, we know who this guy is, then it's, it would be wise maybe to discontinue the pursuit. We don't need to get him immediately. We can get him another time. But sometimes we don't always have that information. So we go off whatever information we have at the time. Um, again, if it's, uh, if it's trivial and, uh, they're refusing to stop, it, it may go a couple of blocks, uh, before an officer says, hey, you know what, it, it's not worth it. He's not stopping.
Okay, and then-
It's, it's just, there's so many variables. It's very difficult to say, um, why it is that somebody doesn't stop. Um, a lot of times there might be something in addition to what you observed that's going on, and that's why they don't want to stop. But we're not gonna have, we're not gonna be privy to that information for the most part. It's just based on experience. Why is this person running for such a minor offense?
Yeah, exactly. And I think that sometimes other things can be the reason why, right? And I think from a perspective of safety, if, if the goal is to be safe and if the goal is to prevent safety, I think that it would be logical, right, that PD doesn't continue to cause some further damages, right? So-
Correct.
And that's what I'm asking, right? Like, what are those decision-making points? Do we have the data that supports that that is not what's happening? Um, and even though I see it in policy, I want to know what's happening on the ground. That's why I'm asking.
Again, if, uh, a, a lot of times, um, i- if we see a, maybe a pattern with a, a particular officer who, uh, maybe is in a lot of pursuits, and, uh, maybe they're just for, for minor things like that, then we may, we may need to step in. Maybe he's not violating policy, but maybe there needs to be a little bit of, of training. That's where the training recommendations come in. So we might want to review policy with that officer, uh, to, to maybe discourage him for, from, from taking undue risks, especially if it's for a minor offense.
Okay, and then do we know how much it costs Santana PD for any of the traffic, um, collisions?
Uh, it's gonna depend on the collision.
But do we know how much it has cost, like, Santana PD in the past year? Do you have those numbers?
No, I don't have those numbers available to me.
Okay. Is that public information?
I think you would have to go through legal review, but if it is, it is. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, the city attorney's office, I don't, might have that information, but, uh, I don't know that we would have that information in the police department.
Commissioner Gronski.
We may have that information. I'll look into it, um, next week. Was it, was it just like settlement figures? I may have missed that. Or was it just globally what damages are to our own equipment, our own vehicles, plus settlements, all of that? Okay. Uh, if we maintained any figures, it probably would be restricted to settlements. Um, it would not be like the other, the other figures and things.
Oh, sorry. It would only be settlements of the traffic collisions that could have caused damage to other bystanders? Is that what it would be? Or to-
Our office would probably only maintain statistics related to settlement costs. What, what, what did the city pay out by way of settlement of certain lawsuits or claims? So a lot of times with settlements, you're building in, right, the damages to property, the damages to, to persons. Um, sometimes they're not well parsed out, and if they're, and if, even if they maybe were in the settlement agreement, it would-
They're not itemized, so it would be hard to-
Right. It would be very difficult to comb through and kind of separate the two.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, you asked one more question before we move on, um, and it kind of, I think we moved on to different topics, but I wanted to just circle back real quick and address it with you. You said, what tools are available to officers at the termination pursuit when they're exploring their options in terms of taking an individual into custody? And this was in the vein of using force. One of the things that we try to do at the termination point of a pursuit, again, the individual that was pursued and ultimately his vehicle is now stopped, uh, they have a significant amount of control over what happens. Obviously, if they surrender and they follow commands, then they're taking them into custody and, and that's the extent of it. However, oftentimes they will refuse, even though their vehicle is now disabled, or they're no longer driving away from our officers, and now they're still refusing to come out. At that point, a lot of other options get triggered, and of course, the use of force policy comes into play. But a couple of things we utilize is like our police helicopter. We'll try to get a helicopter overhead. We'll try to look inside the vehicle, see what type of activity is transpiring. Is the person sitting there? And I think we've all seen, you know, just publicly available news where an individual's using drugs or they're waving a, a firearm around. So of course, if we see a firearm, now that, that opens up other options that we have to consider to resolve the situation. If they're just simply sitting there not complying, okay, maybe we deal with that a certain way. But we'll explore things like police helicopter, a drone. Obviously, we have, uh, we're hoping to be, uh, exploring drones here very soon as a police department. And let that go up, let that give us some ability to look inside the vehicle, to explore options we have available to us. At that point, we're trying to maintain some degree of distance. Sometimes we'll call a negotiator to the scene if that's available. Sometimes we'll utilize a police canine if that's appropriate. There's all these different tools that start becoming available for us to ultimately get that situation to a resolution.
Commissioner Gronski.
Uh, you brought something up right now here, Deputy Chief. Um, does Santana still have their own helicopter? Do we still borrow it from, uh, Costa Mesa or Newport or wherever?
We, uh, obtain police helicopter services from the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Oh, from the Sheriff's Department, okay. Where are those heli- helicopters, uh, stayed?
They're at John Wayne.
At the airport?
Yeah, they have a, they have a, like a hangar that they use over there.
Okay.
Um, and then, again, uh, you know, for, for most of our pursuits, we encourage officers to ask for air support if it's available. That way they can kind of see things that we don't always see. And then, uh, they could also, if, you know, pursuit becomes, um, too, uh, too dangerous to continue, they can kind of follow these individuals to see where they go.
How many helicopters does the county have?
I believe they have two.
Just two? That, right, okay. All right, that, that's it, I think. Thank you.
They have four helicopters and we have multiple available throughout the county. And that is typically one of the first requests that officers ask for in the event of a pursuit, is to get the helicopter overhead. Because that does now provide us the opportunity to allow the helicopter to assume oversight of the vehicle and allow us to drive in, in, you know, as safe as we can. Maybe we can create some distance. Sometimes at that point, you'll hear, it's not uncommon to hear a supervisor says, once the, the helicopter gets overhead, we're gonna fall out of the pursuit, allow the helicopter just to monitor the vehicle. Once it comes to stop, they will reengage and attempt to take the individual into custody. There's, those are all factors that go in every pursuit, because it involves a human being on the, uh, the offender's side. You know, they have, they have decisions that they make that ultimately factor into the decisions we make.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vega.
No more questions for me.
Commissioner, our Vice Chair.
I have a question about the helicopters, actually. So does the police department ever collaborate with like news stations that have their own helicopters that are pursuing, that are-
Collaborate, no.
So if, uh, if, let's say a helicopter's not available for the police department, but the news stations are obviously tracking what's going on and everything like that, the police department would not reach out and coordinate with the, the news agency that has the helicopter?
No.
Okay. I was just curious. Um, okay, so, uh, one other question that I have has to do with data. Um, so I know some of my, um, fellow commissioners have asked for data about crashes, um, that, uh, relate to, uh, vehicle pursuits. My question is about data relating to the use of force, um, with regard to vehicle pursuits. And specifically, I'm interested in use of force that, um, is used to effectuate a stop, so to bring the, the pursuit to an end. Um, and specifically, I'd be interested in knowing, kind of like from a, like, you know, for each of the different, uh, uh, what are, what are they called? Um, techniques that police officers can use. So like blocking and ramming and like shooting guns and things like that. I'd be interested in knowing how often that has happened in the past five years, each of those things, in comparison to all of the vehicle pursuits that have taken place.
Commissioner, I, I think I'll take that question. So, um, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can tell you, and obviously Commander Lopez oversees RIA, and he gets all these once they get closed out. It is extremely rare. As I sit here right now, I can't even think of one off the top of my head when we've had like a ramming or something like that. It, it's, it's in the policy because it is an option in an extreme situation, but it, it's far from common.
I, I appreciate that. And, um, I totally get that you wouldn't have the numbers. Wasn't, I wasn't asking for them now. Just at some point, I think it'd be, be helpful to, to know. Um, but I appreciate, I appreciate the, the insight. Thank you. Um, and I think those are all of my questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. I thought it was really helpful. And in general, I just want to say that I think the policy is very well-written. It's detailed. It has a lot of guidance. So, yeah, I think it's a good policy. Thank you.
Um, a couple of questions. Uh, one, what is the effect of not pursuing people? Do you understand what I'm going with that?
Yeah, I mean, if, for example, if we had a policy, uh, citywide where we weren't gonna pursue for minor offenses, then people wouldn't be afraid to run. So they wouldn't, uh, I mean, that, that's happened in, in several jurisdictions where, you know, they, they put that policy in place. People aren't afraid to, to run from the police. Um, I don't know that we want that in this city.
So, so the point being, pursuits are necessary in many conditions, correct? Otherwise, people will disregard-
I believe they're necessary.
Most minor things, correct? Okay, thank you. Uh, the other thing I have, pursuits, and I unfortunately didn't get a chance to read the entire policy, pursuits with children in the car? Can you give a brief overview of that? If there's children in the car, what's the policy on that?
Uh, well, it, it, again, it's gonna depend on the situation. For example, if, if we have information that it's a kidnapping suspect and he's got the child, I, I don't know that anybody would want us to discontinue that pursuit. We would want to retrieve the child. So a- again, it's gonna depend on, uh, you know, if we have somebody in a minivan and they're, they're running from us for a, a minor violation, then we might let that go, uh, so as to not put the, the children, if we know there's children inside the vehicle, at, at risk. So it's just a variety of, of factors we would, if we have that information or intelligence.
Understood. Uh, let's, just to play the scenario game, they're driving erratically and they have children in the car. You've attempted to stop and they decide to take off. There are kids in the car. They're, they're doing 60 through town. What's, what do you do?
Well, again, it's, it, if they're driving like that too, they're obviously, they're putting the children at risk, and that in and of itself is a, is a crime. So, um, but again, are we gonna risk the life of that, that child, um, by, by pursuing them? It's gonna depend on, on a variety of factors. Is it urgent that we make that stop immediately? Or is it, hey, let's just, there's, I saw a kid in the car. But again, what's gonna happen to the kid? Why is he driving? So it's, a- again, it's, it's, you, you have to weigh the, the pros and cons of, of that scenario.
Understood. Uh, again, it's discretionary. There's a lot of factors involved. Thank you. Uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, I just have a question about drones. So I know that the, the potential use of drones came up a little bit ago. Um, can you talk about how the use of drones would affect the police, the vehicle pursuit policy? Do, and I'm, I'm asking you to speculate, because obviously we don't have them yet. Would obtaining drones eliminate, for the most part, um, vehicle pursuits? Meaning if we had sufficient, a sufficient amount of drones, could we just like dispatch a drone whenever there was a, a pursuit and let the drone take care of it and, and follow the car wherever it goes?
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I don't know all that much about drones and their capabilities. So I, I would just be guessing. I, I, I don't know that I could give you a good answer on that.
Commissioner, um, I don't know that the technology is there yet to where we can say, oh, you know, have a drone basically lock into a vehicle and then just follow it until it comes to rest. Uh, I'm sure it's out there. It may even be just be cross-prohibitive.
Well, it, it would be piloted by somebody, right? Somebody remotely?
Uh, it could be. It could be, yes. And, and that may be an option at some point. I don't know if the drones can go fast enough. Maybe they can go high enough and get a long eye. I think there's a lot of variables there. There are instances where I think a drone could and will be valuable. I think the biggest factor is gonna be at that pursuit termination point, to be able to get that bird's eye view into the conduct of the, of the individual who's likely refusing to surrender or something like that. You know, you can envision a pursuit termination where you have that felony traffic stop taking place. We're giving commands. And it's like, hey, is this person even hearing us? Are they responding? You know, of course, we're giving multiple languages if that's available. And then, you know, the ability to get the drone over there and even give commands from the drone, to try to de-escalate that situation and get that individual to comply and submit to arrest. I think that's a very valuable tool specifically at that termination.
Yeah, it seems like drones would be a very beneficial thing for the city to have. Particularly if it could result in, you know, us having basically like unlimited access to a- to a helicopter, um, you know, like a, uh, I, I don't know the terminology, but basically the helicopter, um, to, to, to track, you know, people who are fleeing and things like that. And, um, I guess the other question that I have is, um, do we know how many drones the city of Santa Ana would be, like, if we were to move forward, like, how many we would obtain?
We're still exploring that project, but at this point, we don't have a, a hard number.
Okay, thank you.
And, and let me clarify, we're still exploring that project. We do have various numbers in mind, but technology is changing so rapidly. Uh, it may be a situation where we end up with a variety of different types of drones and capabilities, so that number's gonna be a, a fluid number right now.
And at this point, it's only for pursuits or for other?
Oh, no, pursuits is, the question was in the context of pursuits. I don't even know at this point how a drone would factor into pursuit, other than the termination point.
Oh, I, oh, I see. In general, the Senate committee is looking into getting drones in general.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up, clarify question, if that's okay?
Yeah, uh, real quick though, because it's, we are, we're all given time, so if you have a question, make it quick. Anybody else? Let's, okay, we're gonna have one more. Um, Commissioner Vega, after you, and then we're gonna call it done.
Thank you. Just clarification, so the city has not approved the purchase of drones, correct? Okay, because I think there was some confusion with the report that was approved on the military use weapons, right? But it's not.
We have not approved a budget for them and we have not, uh, we have not presented any of that to council yet. So, uh, at some point, we are doing the research. We will bring it to city council and then from there, we can move forward with the drone implementation, uh, policies and procedures and updates.
Thank you.
Would that come before us at all, the drones?
It is definitely something that you can request to bring. Uh, I know our police department would take the initiative of, uh, preparing policy and procedure. And then once that's ready, that's something that your body could review.
Thank you. I, I was just wondering about, um, high-speed pursuits that, is, is there like, have you guys ever heard of there being a, an alert system where, let's say there's a high-speed chase in Santa Ana? And, um, is there like some kind of warning system that can be sent out to people? I don't know if in the area or maybe anybody who's registered to the Santa Ana app that says caution, high-speed pursuit at a certain area? That way drivers are aware of it?
I'm not aware of an alert system that would, um, there, there's definitely mechanisms to send out, uh, broadcasts, but I think pursuits are by their very nature mobile. And you even mentioned high speed. You know, by the second we say that there's a pursuit at a certain intersection, uh, five seconds later, it's gonna be at a completely different intersection. And I, I don't know that, I think we might create, um, some concerns and some hysteria potentially, when in reality, uh, you know, it's gonna come and pass very quickly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there, I mean, there, and there is a system where at least, uh, our, our officers are aware when there's a pursuit. Um, there's, there's radio, uh, traffic internally. We have our channels and then they have a, a county-wide channel. If you have, let's say, an agency's coming through our jurisdiction, uh, they're, they're supposed to be broadcasting over the county-wide channel, so we, we know what's going on, where it is, uh, and, and if, if they need our assistance or not.
Alrighty, I have a request. Can we turn off the AC? My, my hands are going numb, folks. Uh, the second part is, uh, Mr. City Attorney, have you captured our commission direction? And to tie into that, we have a que- request from Commissioner Said for the accident reports, uh, request for the demographics of pursuit and you, and, and the number, correct?
Yeah, the demographics, um, the initiation, the reason why it was initiated, graphics and the location, if public and if they're.
Okay, we also have, uh, um, request for information on the use of force, request for pursuits that ended in death. Um, and a whiteboard would be a nice thing, if that's something we can throw out at this time. Um, the cost of the collisions and the data for the use of force to stop, uh, the vehicles. So, if you could capture all that, that'd be wonderful. And, and a timeline too for, uh, responding to those requests. Uh, thank you. Alrighty, next agenda is the business calendar. Item number four pertains to police oversight commission bylaws. May we have a staff report?
We've, uh, been reviewing bylaws for a few months now. While there was some discussion about holding off on bylaws, I think the, the consensus was to just move them forward because we don't know what will happen with the ordinance, if it'll change or if it'll stay the same. So, we're presenting a version of the bylaws that incorporates, uh, the comments that were provided by the commissioners. And if you, uh, approve them, we can move forward with these at this time. Uh, or if you have any comments, we're happy to discuss.
Um, sure, there'll be comments. Um, we'll start with Commissioner Pereira. I'll give you five.
No comments.
Commissioner Said.
Okay.
Commissioner Gronski.
No.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Um, I, I read it and it looks good to me. Uh, the only, uh, question I have is for the agenda. Does a police oversight director get it, uh, is he able to put stuff on the agenda if he wants?
I think the answer to that is yes. Um, but he would consult with the city manager and we'd build the agenda together.
Okay, so my question is the same thing on the agenda. I think this is something I've, I brought up. And so, can you clarify for me what you, what your interpretation of should consult with the police oversight director and the city manager prior to its consideration by the commission? Because my understanding was that we had a conversation that we would mimic what the city council does, which is submit the memo to you and then you present that memo to, to us. So, does that mean we have to consult with you before the?
It's always good to consult with the commit, and to, with the director and with either me or the city manager, uh, before we place it on the agenda, so we can ensure that we are incorporating all the language that you want in it
Okay.
From the beginning. So, it's more of a, yes, I can take your memo and we can put it in, but if you don't consult with us, then there might be more questions when, when we bring it forward.
I see, but it, it's not prohibiting the memo from ever reaching, but rather a check and balance of ensuring clarity to move forward?
Correct.
It wouldn't give any power to prevent anyone who wants to bring up a subject matter?
Correct. We wouldn't say, no, you can't place it on there, but we might make recommendations and you could choose to accept those or not.
Okay, then I'm okay with that.
Any other, any other questions?
I have a question.
Certainly.
I don't think we got a red line for this. Um, did, did we? I don't think so, okay. Would it be possible, I don't know who had the pen on this, but just like a very quick, high-level overview of any significant changes that were made?
One of the significant changes that was made, there was some language proposed about having the city manager have authority about, uh, excusing absences. Uh, the city manager, uh, we, we want it to be up to the commission. So, one of the things you will see here that we did not accept based on the comments was that, uh, the process for excused absences is a bit different. If someone is not here, they notify the clerk. And then at the meetings, you'll notice that on the agenda is, one of the first items is excused absences. So, when you approve excused absences, that already excuses whatever absences are here. Now, in the case that you didn't want to excuse as a body, then you could pull that item for discussion and then take a vote on that.
Thank you.
Then I'll let Jonathan touch on any other items.
I don't believe there were any significant changes from, um, the last draft. There was some cleanup. Um, I know that the absences was a, a point of discussion.
That was, that was all me.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I have some questions. On section five, um, I believe it's B. My pages are kind of screwed up here, so, um, is it B? I'm sorry, it's, it, it's section one, item B. I see that was added, I, I'm sorry, Article One, Section B. No, section, no, it's section, section, yeah. Well, Article Three, Section One, thank you. Article Three, Section One, B. Uh, I see subject to the final approval by city manager. That is something that was added because I reviewed there are previous, uh, document that we had discussed and that was not in there. Um, I'm curious if that is applicable to other commissions or if it's just this commission in particular? And if it is this commission in particular, why? Oh, I'm sorry. It, it's actually, if you look at page thirty-one or if you look at page two of five, it's hard to tell on this because it's not delineated.
Article three, section one.
Yeah, Article Three, Section One, B. Thanks again, man. Yeah, B.
Special meetings?
It says special meetings may be called at the, the direction of the chairperson and majority of the commission members, subject to the availability of staff and subject to final approval by the city manager. That was not on our, our original, um, our red line drawing, our line, outline I'm drawing, or document that we had gone through.
So, I, I believe that that may not have been on the original
It was not.
Version that was submitted, but, uh, you vice chair now? I'm sorry. Chair, chair, excuse me.
Correct.
Chair. I, I believe that that was added on some iteration along the way.
Um, I, I looked through what I had and I didn't find that. I'm just curious as to why that was added. And again, if that's particular to this commission or if that's something that's, uh, holds true for other commissions. I did not find it in the, um, planning commission, uh, bylaws that we were given originally. So, I'm just curious as to, if that's us in particular, our policy in general, or if that relates to the ordinance.
Chair, I can't speak to the other commissions because I just don't know, um, with regard to their bylaws. If you didn't see it in the planning commission's bylaws, then it may not have been there. I, I don't know if the planning commission's bylaws speak to special meetings, period.
They do not.
I'd have to review that.
No, so, this is an opportunity for this commission to actually bring a special meeting forward. Uh, I, I don't know of other commissions that actually have this as, uh, as part of their bylaws.
And that was actually gonna be, thank you, Sylvia, because that was gonna be my next point, is that most commissions don't have the ability to have special meetings because it's not, it's not vested with them. This is the ability to do so, but with the understanding that there is still resources issues at play. That's why staff is, is considering it and that it would, it would go through one further level of review, being the city manager.
Got it. Okay, and a, a point of, uh, clerical condition, um, you reference appointments and boards, Division Two, Section Two, Three, Two-Dash-Three-Two-Five. It is not updated. It's still the old version. Our commission is not even on there. So, that'd be something you want to do on the city.
What page is that, sorry?
Uh, it's, if you look at Division Two, Appointed Boards and Commissions, this is on the ordinance on the city website. It's not in your, it's referenced in the, in the, the bylaws here. But if you go to the city website, and I just printed this out on Wednesday, um, it's not updated. It still has the old pay scale. It doesn't even have our commission on there. So, just for the sake of being clear with the public, I think we need to get these kind of things updated before we start turning out.
We'll review the website.
Yeah, please do. Um, again.
And I'm sorry, Chair, can you, can you direct me to the exact reference that you're
It's, it's
In the, in the bylaws?
Uh, Jesus, yeah, let me, let me find it again. Well, I can tell you, it's, I don't know, it's section, it referenced section Two-Dash-Three-Two-Five. Yeah, I, my Three-Two-Eight, Three-Two-Five. Anyway, it wasn't current. That's all I can tell you.
I found it. It's Article Two, Section One.
Yeah. Anyway, it's not current. I mean, just so we, you know, just to be consistent here. I apologize for this. I've got a pile of paper here. Yeah, other than that, that was, uh, that was my comment on there. Um, so, yep. And one last round for anybody else. Okay. Alrighty, hearing no further discussion, is there a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Vice Chair Castillo-Lauten and seconded by Commissioner Said, and that was to approve the police oversight commission bylaws. Commissioner, Commissioner Gronski? Commissioner Mejia?
Yes.
Commissioner Pereira?
Yes.
Commissioner Said? Vice Chair Carpenter? Oh, no, hold on. Commissioner Vega is saying my volume.
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chair Castillo-Lauten?
Yes.
And then Chair Carpenter?
Uh, yes, but I'd like to have it, uh, for reconsideration. Once the ordinance is final.
So, is that like an, an amendment to the motion?
I'm sorry?
Is that an amendment?
No, it's just for reconsideration. We're, could, just come back for reconsideration. I think it's important to see what we're gonna have after the ordinance is passed.
I believe that the bylaws, they should speak to amendment.
I'm not asking for amendment, but, uh, for reconsideration.
I'm, I'm not sure what the distinction is, Chair, I'm sorry.
It's section, section fourteen, motion of reconsideration. Any member who voted with a majority may move a reconsideration at any, of any action at the same time. So, I'm just asking for reconsideration on that at a further date, once the ordinance is, once we finally see the final ordinance. If that's a parliamentary error, let me know, please.
We'll, we'll move with reconsideration. So, we'll pass the item.
We're approving the bylaws?
Right.
Okay.
Alrighty, that brings us to the end of the business calendar. Deputy City Manager, do you have any closing comments?
Thank you, Commissioners, for being here tonight. I'm very excited that we're moving our bylaws forward and that we have tackled some of the items that you were interested in reviewing. So, we still have a lot of homework to do and we plan to, uh, bring back the data to you and bring back certain items to you, such as the UVs, uh, this, uh, driving vehicle pursuits and, and the other items that we've discussed. So, um, as of now, we still have not scheduled the special meeting for the, for the police oversight commission ordinance review, the work-study session with our city council, so that's still pending. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, commission member comments?
Chair Carpenter, just, just real quick, uh,
I'm sorry.
Just a, a couple of things I just wanted to, uh, announce to the, uh, to the commission. Today, we graduated seven recruits from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy, so that's a really good thing. That's seven more new officers coming on board, um, to work towards some of our, our staffing. And, um, this Thursday, October sixteenth, from six to nine PM, we'll be hosting our trunk-or-tree in front of the Santa Ana Police Department. It's one of our biggest attended events. We usually end up with several thousand kids in their costumes and we got booths from all throughout the department, so if you are all invited.
Thank you. Uh, how, how many offices are we still short?
Um, with, I believe our current With, I believe our current vacancy rate is at thirty-ish.
Thirty, short.
So about thirty, thirty-one.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Back to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Pereira?
Thank you, Chair Carpenter. Thank you for all the information and it's been really good to have meetings just running. Others, I appreciate that. I will put on the cloud of requests on data, bring back my request for data around settlements of against, you know, resulting from complaints about, you know, officer involved deaths, injury and stuff like that over the last. I would like to go back from twenty-ten to now. I believe the last set of data that we had on that was from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. Chair Carpenter, I think when we were serving in the Measure X Commission, we got that data, but I think we'll be able to have that now, twenty-ten, twenty-twenty-five. With one caveat as well, if we can also, because I know that sometimes when the payments or the settlements paid out, it's not necessarily within the same year when that, you know, the incident happened. So we can have that data, of course, on when they were paid out, but also we can have, you know, if there's a way to desegregate that data by the amount of money paid on the settlement tied to the original date when, you know, the initial claim was made, just so we know, you know, we have an idea of, you know, which incidents happened in which year that resulted in which amount. So that reflects that. So that's my request to the data gods in the city staff, if we can get that. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Said?
Thank you. Thank you so much for all of your work. One thing I've been curious about, and maybe we can agendize this later, but just the number of arrests made for a 148 only. I think that if we can figure out if there's meaningful arrests versus arrests that I don't mean to sound cynical, but arrests that we just kind of tack on a 148, that would help us see, is there a root problem? And what is that and why did that happen? Versus this person not only has a 148, but they have, you know, a disturbing the peace and a public intoxication, this, that and the other. I think it would be helpful to understand the arrests made and how is it helping us as a community when an arrest is made? Something like that, that would be helpful. It doesn't have to happen immediately. And then of the 148s that we do arrest by itself, how many is the district attorney actually moving forward? I don't know if that's a statistic that we track, but that would be helpful because if there is sort of meaningless arrests made, maybe we can stop that with this commission and also help our police department not have to get sued for something. Other than that, I love Halloween, so I will probably go next week. And I hope everyone has a really safe Halloween and thank you.
Commissioner Murray, Mejia?
So now that we have the bylaws and we've adopted them, will you be sharing the memos? Or does that mean that any memo we've sent in the past couple of months, we should call you and consult and then resend? Well, it's already been sent, so I'm asking, do you have to resend it?
Okay, so I will take the one that you had presented. We do have a little template that we'll plug it into. We'll send it back to you. You can review it. We'll consult, we'll get on a call and then we'll place that at the next available meeting.
Okay, I sent, I think there was one in June. And then I sent a couple others a couple of months before, but I can forward you the emails to both of you and TC, so you.
Yes, please. Thank you.
And then in terms of the policy for the vehicle pursuit, I personally feel I would feel more confident having data and better information to make any recommendation, given that I think having what's happening on the ground is more useful for me, so I don't really have any feedback on that. But once the data is here, then I can have opinions. Thank you.
Commissioner Gronski?
I was going to sit here and just say thank you for everything, but you made me think of something. Is anybody allowed to go, just walk into the city yard? Now on First Street, or do you have to be with a police car or a city car or something?
The city yard is a secure facility, so you would need to have a reason to be there.
Permission to go, what I was going to suggest, because talking about the pursuits and everything, how deadly they can get. You have time and if they'll let you in, ask permission, go down first in Daisy or first or something. And look at the police cars down there. You'll be shocked to see what they look like. They're cut in half. Some of them are cut in half. Some have no front to them. Those are some of the things that the officers have been through, so that's the city yard if you're interested in, if they'll let you go. Maybe the, our police representations here can see that you can get in, you know, walk in or whatever. I used to be able to drive in, but not anymore. Thank you. Thank you for everybody for coming and everything. It was very interesting and I think we're all like to investigate the pursuits that come about, since we've seen so many of them on the television, you know, from LA and everything. And it kind of makes you feel, well, good, at least Santa Ana's not doing that, but evidently they may be doing it, but not quite as they don't have to do it quite as much, because we're not LA, thank heavens. That takes an awful lot of people. But thank you, everybody. And to Commander Joe Ever, correct? Yeah, that was here. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Commissioner Vega?
Yeah, thank you to staff again for everything. This might be, I don't know if it's too early to ask this question, but I'm wondering what the effects of any Proposition Thirty-six has been since it was passed. Have we made, has there been more arrests with, towards individuals who are using drugs in public? Things like that?
Yes, we have been making arrests related to the Prop Thirty-six charges, or excuse me, sections that were enacted. In terms of your question, have we seen the effects of it yet? I think it is still early. I know that the state is still trying to allocate funding and there's a whole lot of conversations about that transpiring. So yes, we have been making arrests and I think those cases are making their way through the judicial system now. So hopefully soon we'll start to see some results of that enactment of that.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Vice Chair Castillo-Lauten?
I have no comments other than to thank everybody for being here and for the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, again, thank everybody. It was good. I do have one, again, little item, agenda list. We were promised. I haven't seen that yet. If we can work on that, that'd be nice to have because people keep bringing up things and asking where they are at, so we have an idea. Wondering if we could possibly see some of those items. Other than that, yes, thank you, guys, and have a.
I forgot, I remembered. What about the emails? Are those, not necessarily that we need new emails from the city, but can we create new ones ourselves so that folks have access to sending us information if they want to?
So we've discussed this and the best method for that would be to send it directly to our oversight director, because none of the other commissions have emails. They don't do the direct communication with the individual commissioners, but with the commission as a whole.
So if the community wants to talk or send information, then we should direct them to send it to the director? To Jack? Okay.
I understand, obviously, creating the big emails might not be feasible, but could there be like a city email created, say like police oversight commission at Santa Ana slash that or something like that? Just so, because I wonder if we have his email be public and if people want to send information to the commissioner, I want his Director Morse's email to get swamped.
So we do have a method for the community to reach out and provide complaints. Are you just asking for specific questions related to the commission? Because those are items that we can field.
More like communication with the commission, because there is the complaint portal, but like in general, just public communication for the commission.
There's also the ecomments that they could provide for agendas. Are you talking about something that's a little more secure? Because I know everything's technically a public record and it's open unless it's got sensitive or confidential information.
More like streamlined, so for example, we have had, I think at one point we had a media request, right, for the commission and they email all of our emails, but if they can go to just maybe just one email and then that that goes, gets forward to Director Morse's email or something like that. I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, outside complaints or outside public comment, right, if there's a way for the public to communicate with us.
Just so I'm understanding, Commissioner, what you're suggesting is a method in which the community could get in touch with the commission as a whole, right? I think that that method is coming to commission meetings and speaking at public comment. The members of the community are able to communicate with each and every one of you individually, or potentially even up to three of you. I just don't know that the most practical method is creating a a message board, if you will, for the community to interact with the commission, because we could be venturing dangerously close to a meeting. If there is, if there is activity back and forth on this type of board, that would be borderline business and that could violate the Brown Act. So again, I think if the community wants to engage with the commission as a whole, public comment would be the time to do so and the community can engage with you individually through whatever method, phone, email, in person, that sort of thing.
Thank you for that clarification.
And then there is the e-comment portion, right? So anybody can share a comment and it goes directly to the clerk's office and the clerk distributes all of those comments before any agendas.
Okay. As I was saying, a couple administrative things, the agenda list. Yeah, that would be nice to have. And the suggestion about the whiteboard, that might be a nice thing to have in the future, especially if Jack has something to show us. Just a suggestion, a request, inquiry, whatever you want to term it. But again, thank you, guys, for the presentation and with that, the next police oversight commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and the council chamber is at 5:00 PM. I hereby adjourn the meeting at six fifty-seven.